I show one more minute.
Same with me.
Before I start reading.
And we are now streaming live.
Almost. Bless you. So the good news is we had a snowstorm last night, which gave us like 10 inches of snow, which was good. The bad news is the place is up a hill with a switchback road and the rental car can't make it.
Uh oh.
So we've had to get lifts from the sort of resort people up the hill. They have studded snow tires. Okay, we're at 5:30, so.
Yep, go ahead.
Pursuant to recently adopted amendments of the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Pritzker's executive order 2022-05 has extended this provision through March 5th, 2022. As village president, I've made the determination that it is not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the committee of the whole is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Corralius in the village hall council chambers in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So, manager Crowley, could you please do a roll call?
Certainly, trustee Hallwax.
There.
Trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
There.
Trustee Ruben.
There.
Trustee Vrie. And President Rowan.
Here. This meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being recorded, audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call rather than voice votes on any agenda item requiring a vote. Second item on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule, the board approved on April 16th, 2020. Here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and the telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I'd asked that Jordan Rogalski read any public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items will be read when we reach that item on the agenda. Jordan, are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
President Rowan, no, we did not receive public comment for non-agenda items. However, we do have public comment for our discussion this evening.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoe meeting at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting and written comments should be limited to 400 words. The next item on the agenda, item three is a discussion regarding licensing agreements downtown outdoor dining and carryout parking. And there is available online memorandum about that. And I'd ask assistant village manager Sharon Tanner to present this. Sharon, please take it away.
All right. Thank you and good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen for a brief presentation this evening. One moment, please. Will I call up that presentation where we are? All right. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So this evening, we would like to have a discussion with the board about.
Sharon, just so you know, you do have the, it's your view, not the presentation view. So we've got the next slide showing as well.
Okay, pardon me. Let me, let me toggle that. Okay. One moment. Let's try that again. Better? Okay, I see a thumbs up. So that, that's a good sign. Okay, sorry about that. This evening, we have a presentation for you about outdoor dining licensing agreements and temporary carryout parking spaces. This is a continuation of several conversations that the board has had over the last year and a half or so, and really more so in the last couple of months, as we think about what a post-pandemic environment might look like. This evening, we'll ask for your feedback on several points related to licensing agreements, carryout parking spaces and our sidewalk seating program. And specifically, if you would like to continue those programs and if you would like to make any modifications to them or formalize them a bit more. And so we'll talk through that this evening. Our goal this evening is to get your feedback and your direction to help us, if you would like to do so, to create more formal programs that we can bring back in March for your formal consideration. So my presentation this evening will be brief so that I can get out of the way and focus more of our time this evening on the discussion from the board. So we'll briefly run through a summary of our past discussions. Some of the considerations for licensing agreements, if the board would like to consider them in the future for outdoor dining areas and/or structures. Some potential modifications to our traditional sidewalk seating program. And also considerations regarding whether or not you'd like to continue to offer temporary carryout parking spaces to restaurants. And then again, based upon your direction, if you direct us to bring back more formal programs, we will do so in March. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but I did want to illustrate that the board has had a series of conversations that began in response to the pandemic. And as we shift to what we hope is transitioning into a post-pandemic environment, how we may want to continue these conversations. Most recently, over the summer, the board discussed outdoor dining and parking regulations and opted not to make any changes for the time being, but did want to come back in early 2022, which brings us here this evening. With regards to licensing agreements, the village first entered into licensing agreements in 2020 as a COVID mitigation measure, as restaurants were subject to indoor dining restrictions and there was customer hesitancy once indoor dining was permitted to return. We entered into three licensing agreements that the village board approved with Guildhall, Hometown and Valor Restaurants. There were no fees charged with that as part of the COVID-19 mitigation measures. The two licensing agreements that are still in place are those with Guildhall and with Hometown. And the licensing agreement with Valor terminated upon its expiration as scheduled, as Valor did not choose to have a winter outdoor dining offering. So this evening, really a threshold question before the board is whether you would like to consider licensing agreements in the future. And if so, we have a series of recommendations of things that, that you consider to include the scope, whether you'd like them to be for just seating areas or structures or both. The imposition of fees, we do think that it would be appropriate to charge fees and we'll talk a bit more in a few moments about some recommendations that we have for the fee amounts. And then also appearance and design guidelines. We have not used these in the past. However, if we are looking on a more going forward basis, we believe it would be appropriate to consider some appearance and design guidelines for, for how the licensing agreements may be used and structures or dining areas may be created. We would also suggest that we dialogue further about the review and approval process. I'll note that we've had some input from the restaurants that have used the licensing agreements in the past. They, they've each been appreciative for the opportunity to do so and are hopeful for the opportunity to continue using them in the future. Now, we did get comment back from North Shore Community Bank relative to parking availability. As some of the parking spaces nearby were used by one of the restaurants pursuant to their licensing agreement. And I believe Jordan will read a couple of public comments following the, the discussion and presentation this evening. Moving to sidewalk seating, this is a program that we've had in place for many, many years pre-pandemic. It's our traditional sidewalk seating program that in the past allowed restaurants to place sidewalk tables in front, or excuse me, businesses to place sidewalk seating in front of their businesses. Strictly in front of their storefront. As a COVID kind of relief measure, we extended that to allow businesses to place tables further beyond just their storefront, perhaps to adjacent storefronts with permission from the neighboring business owner or property owner. Again, we did get a public or a comment back early from North Shore Community Bank regarding the impact to their business operations relative to noise that was generated from some of the sidewalk seating. The restaurants that have used sidewalk seating in the past have done so for many years and have indicated a desire to continue doing so in the future, specifically with the expanded seating. So the feedback points that we'll ask for this evening are whether or not you would like to consider or excuse me, continue the expanded sidewalk seating to allow table placement to stretch beyond the immediate storefront of the business. And then whether we would like to implement some appearance or design guidelines. Presently, we don't have any, though we do have requirements for heating elements that are used to ensure that they're placed in a safe and appropriate manner and that the materials that are used to construct the heating elements meet fire code requirements and safety requirements. I should note, this program has been offered as an administrative permit without a fee due to the minimal staff requirements that are needed to process the permit application and the minimal impact to sidewalks in the downtown generally. The last program that will, we'd like your feedback on this evening is temporary carryout parking spaces. In 2020, we began providing a few spaces to restaurants that were interested in having them in order to facilitate carryout parking as carryout became a larger portion of their business operations during the COVID-19 pandemic. This has been received very well by the restaurants. Carryout is expected to continue as a significant portion of their business operations. And as I spoke with one restaurant, they indicated that their carryout sales remain strong year over year is about equal. And that's comparing to the year when there were indoor dining restrictions and currently there are none. So that seems to be an indicator that their carryout business is expected to continue to be strong. In 2020 and 2021, we did not charge a fee for the carryout parking spaces. They were provided as sandwich board style signs that restaurants could place out during their peak carryout hours with, with the level of discussion with the village. Restaurants have been managing those spaces. And we, our observations are that customers have grown accustomed to those spaces being available and that that has become part of the downtown traffic flow. And so this evening, we'll ask for the board's feedback as to whether or not you'd like to continue offering carryout parking spaces. And if so, we'd suggest that you consider fees and designating a maximum number of spaces. And I'll talk about fees in a moment. I will pause and rewind a bit to the conversations that we had with the board in the summer. When we talked about downtown parking a bit more broadly and one of the ideas that we were evaluating was taking our existing 15-minute parking spaces and designating some of them as 15-minute parking spaces that also could be accommodated as curbside pickup. So kind of a hybrid use space. As we evaluated that, spoke with the restaurants, it became apparent that that wasn't a viable way forward. And so that's why our recommendation this evening is that if you would like to have parking spaces that are specifically to accommodate carryout, that you consider offering these temporary parking spaces. And perhaps we, we reallocate some of those 15-minute spaces within the downtown in light of there being more ongoing curbside carryout spaces in front of our restaurants. So I didn't want to make that distinction since this is a change from our initial thoughts that we discussed over the summertime. Moving into fee recommendations, when we first start with licensing agreements, the intent behind a fee structure would be to recognize that there is an impact to the, the downtown in that these parking spaces, if parking spaces are used or other areas of public right of way. For example, Hometown has been using a larger swath of sidewalk in front of its storefront. There is an impact in that when structures or dining areas are placed upon those, those areas, those areas are, are no longer available for general use. They are being used by that purpose. And recognizing that restaurants are, are using that space to support their business operations, we believe that it would be appropriate to charge a fee. Our attempt is to strike a balance in the fee so that it's not overly burdensome to the restaurants and that those that would like to use it are able to do so in a meaningful way. But also is significant enough that spaces used judiciously and more spaces not requested than what is needed. Or what is, what can be sustained with the business's operations. So our initial estimation is a fee that may amount to $1,000 to $1,500 per parking space or square footage equivalent. That would be on a yearly basis. Excuse me. A yearly basis. The intent again is to encourage judicious use of the down, of the spaces and not to hamper the economic vitality of the downtown. As we researched this concept and vetted this concept, we identified pretty quickly that there is not much of a comparable market among our neighboring communities. Few have made determinations as to how they're going to treat outdoor dining in the future and whether they'll continue to enter into licensing agreements on their own. And so there's not a comparable market that we can look to among our neighboring communities in the same way that we can with other fees that are more typical of most municipalities. With regards to the carryout parking spaces, we're recommending a more modest fee than those that may be charged for the licensing agreements, recognizing that these spaces are used temporarily during hours that are agreed upon by the village. And so it's not a full-time designation of a space or full-time use of a space. So our initial thought is a fee in the range of perhaps 75 to 100 or perhaps up to 125 per space per month. Some possibilities for how we may structure that fee schedule may be a sliding schedule to increase with an increasing number of spaces that may be used to again encourage very judicious use of space. And perhaps abating the fee for the first space or places for eating taxpayers. And I do want to stress that our recommendation, if this were to be considered, would be for the first space only, not for all spaces. As it may be possible, if the board chooses to do so, that a restaurant may want to use more than one space. Along that, that note, we would suggest imposing a maximum number of fees or excuse me, maximum number of spaces that a restaurant could request to use, perhaps three or four somewhere in that neighborhood. Based upon our conversations with the restaurants, we're currently using the carryout parking spaces. We don't think that it's likely that every restaurant would request to use the maximum. Some are quite satisfied with one or two based upon their operational needs. Whereas other restaurants that have a more significant takeout volume, like Hometown, for example, might have a request for a higher utilization. And so we would suggest that as we think about a maximum number of spaces that the board consider, what is the aggregate number of spaces that you would be willing to designate? And perhaps it's the number that we revisit each year based upon demand and perhaps changes to the downtown landscape. If we would have new restaurants join downtown business family or restaurants that perhaps want. Moving to appearance and design guidelines. As I mentioned, we do not have, or we have not had appearance or design guidelines for the structures or the dining areas that were created pursuant to licensing agreements. Design and appearance is a source of complaint that we got from residents. We heard from members of community as to people having different tastes and aesthetics, different perceptions of whether a structure or dining area fit with the look and feel of the downtown. And so we would suggest that if licensing agreements are to be considered on a going forward basis, that we also consider imposing appearance and design guidelines to help ensure that any dining areas or structures that are created pursuant to licensing agreements are consistent with the design guidelines of the downtown. We would like for things to be in the spirit of those guidelines. Those guidelines may not be able to be applied on a one-for-one basis because they are intended for permanently the structures versus these uses that are a bit more temporary in nature or a bit more seasonal in nature. But design guidelines could include things like dressing materials that could be used for furniture such as finished wood or metal. If you don't want to have things like plastic furniture, for example, guidelines could address the structures, material itself. Whether you wanted to consider allowing or not allowing soft plastic, soft-sided plastic like a vinyl type material or whether you wanted to limit it to something like a canvas type material for soft-sided structures or rigid plastic. Those are the kinds of things that could be addressed in, in design guidelines. Similarly, signage is something that we would recommend be addressed. Signage may include signage that's placed upon crash barriers or even signage that could be placed upon umbrellas on tables. Some municipalities do have guidelines that prohibit any signage or any lettering of any kind on table umbrellas, whether that's the name of the restaurant or a name of one of their suppliers, like for example, a brand of liquor that they carry. You may see those in different uses. So our suggestion would be to have some thoughtful consideration around signage. Similarly, with lighting, lighting is an important element and we would recommend creating guidelines around that as well as colors to ensure that they're within the spirit of the downtown design guidelines, but still allows some flexibility for the uniqueness of a business and their branding to be reflected in their outdoor environment. I mentioned heating elements in the context of sidewalk seating and our recommendation would be to also include requirements for heating elements, should they be used. And then last, on this list, and there may be others that we want to vet out a bit further, landscaping or decorative elements to ensure again that there's a look and feel that's consistent with the downtown design guidelines. This is meant to be an illustrative list of the kinds of things that we may want to build into a set of appearance and design guidelines and not necessarily an exhaustive list. And so that's the bulk of my presentation. And what I'd like to revisit are the specific points of feedback that we're requesting this evening. First, do, does the board have a desire to continue considering licensing agreements into the future? That really is the threshold question for that topic. If you do want to consider licensing agreements in the future, we would ask for your feedback about what types of uses are appropriate for those licensing agreements, whether it's seating areas, structures or both. Whether it's structures that are for a limited duration of time or lengthier duration of time. Creation of a fee schedule, creation of appearance and design guidance. If you do not want to continue offering licensing agreements in the future or considering it in the future, then the discussion, we would not ask for the more detailed feedback, of course, on fees and design and appearance and the like. And then the impact to our existing licensing agreements would be that those that are currently in place would terminate upon their scheduled conclusion, which they're currently set to run until April. And then there would not be any further consideration of them. We'll also ask for your feedback on the temporary carryout, excuse me, the, yes, the temporary carryout spaces to include creation of a fee schedule and designation of a maximum number of spaces that may be used. And whether you would like to considering, consider offering extended sidewalk seating. The feedback point on the sidewalk seating is, is really simply limited to, do you want to continue with all, allow the opportunity for tables to be placed beyond the storefront of, of the applicable business? We would also again suggest some basic appearance and design guidelines to formalize that program a bit further consistent with some of the elements that we just discussed. And so once we've had an opportunity to discuss this evening, if you give us direction to create programs for development or consideration of licensing agreements in the future or temporary carryout parking spaces, we would bring that back to you at the March village board meeting for your formal consideration. And from there, we would also work through either the scheduled termination of the existing licensing agreements or if there was a request for consideration of an extension, if you do wish to consider its mutual licensing agreements, then we will go through that as well. That concludes my presentation. Our team is happy to answer any questions that you have. Development Services Manager Taylor Baxter, Assistant to the Manager Jordan Rogalski and I are, and Phil are, are well, are able to answer any questions that might have.
Sharon, why don't you jump back one slide and we'll use that as a talking point?
Sure thing.
And thank you, Sharon. So I, I know we have a public comment. And I, trustee Vrie is not able to, is not able to be here. And he's alerted me as to some of his views. But I wonder, instead of me, I mean, I have some, I, I look at this and I think this is not an area where there's a right answer. So you know, I have, I have some thoughts, but I'd welcome the thoughts of the other trustees. And I think the first question, it's phrased in, in Sharon's chart as, do we want to consider licensing agreements in the future? And I think, you know, we may want to license things. I think the real, the first question is, do we want sort of winter structures? And and that seems to me a threshold question. We still might want to license structures that aren't for winter. But do we want winter structures? And I have to say, I'm less enthusiastic about that. I think we're in accommodation for COVID. Knock on wood, COVID's getting better. But I, I wonder where others are on that. And I, trustee Vrie said he is, he thinks if the businesses, if the restaurants want winter structures, he would be inclined to say yes. So that we had two different views on that. What are the, what are the rest of you folks think?
You first, you first.
I get to go first? Okay. So I, I would agree with trustee Vrie in that I'm very much in favor of doing things that add to the vitality of downtown. I also don't think we're necessarily through COVID yet. We don't know exactly when it's going to end, how it's going to end, what the future looks like. There's a lot of uncertainty. But the one thing we do know is that these winter structures have been very helpful. I don't think that they have hurt the, the aesthetics of, of downtown. They've certainly made restaurants more viable. And, and I think we still want to do things that just make our downtown more viable. So, so I would be in favor of doing some sort of licensing.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yeah, I would be in line with trustee listener on, on this. And trustee Vrie, I would like to think that COVID is over, but regardless, I'd like to give the, the businesses the flexibility to do what they think is best or where they can be most profitable. And I think we can all agree that the, having thriving restaurants has added to the, to the vibrancy of the downtown. So I would be in favor of giving them the space that they need, but you know, to, to what we've talked about in the past. You know, we can't have, or the aesthetics of, for example, what Valor has. You know, we can't have or the aesthetics of, for example, what Valor has versus Guildhall has was kind of. Difficult, right? So, you know, I think we should have some kinds of. You know, I don't call it restrictions, but some guidelines. To make sure that, you know, the town doesn't start to look trashy and keep people from wanting to come here, but. But as on a broad theme, I'd be in favor of giving them a lot of leeway to run their businesses how they best think fit with structures and. With spaces as long as they're paying an appropriate fee.
Okay, so that I I count three. How about others?
I will make a note trustee free or or excuse me trustee Mulvaney, I did need to mute your line earlier. And because you're on your phone, you might not have seen that, so you might have to go in and unmute yourself. Just wanted to let you know that if you were trying to talk.
Would you like me to jump in?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I'm not really excited about the structures. We had some visitors here and I'll quote. This is from another North Shore community. They considered the structures, quote, a permanent shanty town. And they really felt that it detracted from the. From the community and what people would expect to find in Glencoe. They don't, they don't do it for me. I guess the other thing, two things about them that bother me, this is especially in the wintertime. Is first of all, they tend to emphasize privacy. In a public space and I think part of the fun of walking through downtown is bumping into people or waving to people at different. Stations along the way and that tends to lock people in in place. The other issue I have is an energy issue in that they very often have these energy. Heaters in each one. I know that several other parts of the country have prohibited that. In there, if they if they have structures to prohibit them. And I I think that, you know, my my vision of of downtown is a very. A lively, convivial place, and I think the structures. Get away from from where that goes. So it's kind of a both a design element and a people element. I do think that it was appropriate to put them in as a way to fight COVID. And to provide expanded dining for our restaurants during this COVID period. And if it is approved, I would suggest that we maybe time, time limited. So it is just in the very worst of the of the cold months and not and not year round. I think umbrella tables, as we see so much in in Europe and in other parts of the country are. More appropriate for the for the downtown. But that's a, that's a design consideration and that's just how I feel.
Thank you. Gary and. Pete, we haven't heard from.
Happy to go.
Yeah, sure. Hi, hi, this is Pete. I think I've got the mute figured out. I am in favor, thank you. I am in favor of these structures with design restrictions. I'm also a little bit confused of whether we're talking just winter or are we talking a larger? I think, I think President Roland tried to limit it to winter. But if we are expand the conversation, I think we need to, we need to always keep in mind there is not only about restaurants. And it's about the use of this public space. But for now, for the wintertime, I think if if restaurants think it's going to add to their. Their business, I think we should allow it with design restrictions and with some appropriate fees.
Just to thank Pete, thank you. Let me just say. So I think we should have the use of our sidewalks. Available for outdoor dining, which is primarily what we're talking about. In, you know, I'll call them summer months. So for me, the question is, do we want permanent? Outdoor dining, which would require permanent structures and. You know, in the summer, I don't anticipate. That, I mean, I remember that Guildhall didn't want to take down its structures during the summer. So to me, the question is, do we want permanent structures on our sidewalks? For extra space for restaurants and that's, I think that's what we're talking about. So far, the answer from the majority appears to be yes, Gary hasn't had a chance to say his piece.
The first thing I'd say is that I am not in favor of. Continuing to block off a portion of our street. Or structures. For Guildhall. And maybe that takes care of that because of the spacing there. We ought to get, you know, we're. And again, I'm talking about, you know, starting this spring after we are sort of in endemic rather than pandemic hopefully. Stages of dealing with the virus. I think it's interesting Dudley that you like a very lively feel as do a number of us. In downtown, I think ironically to me, part of what adds to that is seeing all these people who are sitting and eating. And in the middle of winter, you know, we can have the tables. I don't think anybody is going to object to regular tables being on the sidewalk. In the summer months, we can talk about licensing or not after that, but I think during the winter. When no one's going to be sitting there, it will not feel lively without the permanent, you know, without the winter structures there. That will to me have a negative. Effect on that. I don't know that you can fit permanent structures in without allowing people to take up. The street other than in front of hometown, just because of the physical aspects of things. But that's, that's kind of my my point on that. And I certainly think that if we are going to do things. In a more. In a broader way in terms of allowing people to use more of our sidewalk than we used to, the licensing fees are.
Thank you. So this is unusual, because as I'm just counting the votes here. Although President doesn't vote unless there's a tight seam slice, it seems like we're sort of four to three. In favor of winter. With maybe uncertainty about hometown because of where they are and how their stuff sort of gets in the way of less. Than Guildhall does. I'm, you know. This is a majority rules here, so I think probably, I I haven't changed my view. I may hope. That as we go further into this, minds are changed, but I think because. A majority of the trustees want to entertain. Permanent structures on our sidewalks. We ought to talk about, okay, how are we going to do that? And and. I I will say, I think that's complicated. But let's, you know, I I think we should be talking about that and I'm not positive about how we should. You know, continue discussion, maybe we could. Put that on hold for just a second to make sure we get through the other points, which are the parking spots. So we're. And then we can. Maybe there'll be some things that we can deal with that are a little simpler. But like I said, this is unusual because it isn't, it doesn't. There's no right answer here. There's no. Point of view, there's no ideology that tells you how to come out on this one. So we're all, you know, we're all just doing our best. Let's, maybe we should talk about. Parking, parking spots and and, you know, there. There are two issues about parking spots that I see. You know, there's one of them is this sort of a sign spot for a particular use, which is carryout. And then the other is fifteen minutes and. My lovely wife is a, she teaches at Reach Yoga, she's downtown all the time and so she went through with me. Where she thinks we have too many sort of assigned spots that drive people crazy. There are carryout spots, I think there are three spots in in front of Megs. And based on my limited experience and her greater experience, they're always open, you know, because there's just not that much use. And meanwhile, I think we're probably getting complaints from the bank. Hey, we're getting gripes from the library. Hey, it's right there, but nobody can park there. So I think we should. We should have. My view, we should have designated carryout spots that they should be limited in time and we should have as few of them as possible. And I don't think any of them should be freebies. And from my point of view, the price for each one should go up. Because there ought to be as much parking available as possible. Now, having said that. I think we could maybe convert some of them to fifteen minute spots because when people go to the library, they might be going there for only fifteen minutes. And they go to the bank, they may be going there for fifteen minutes and that might facilitate things. Okay, so that's my thoughts on. The parking spaces, I think we can have, we want to facilitate carryout. I I, we want that to be successful. I think we should. Charge for them and I think we should increase the price for each one.
President Ron, if I could just throw in one. One point and as the board kind of weighs in on their thinking on this. One aspect that we know in our own discussions and review at the staff level is that. The fifteen minute spaces that we have throughout the downtown. I I believe there are twenty six and I could be wrong with that. So somebody on staff should correct me if I am. That they are perhaps distributed. For a past time versus the present. And that there is an opportunity to redistribute some of those fifteen minute spaces. Elsewhere into the downtown where the need arises. As opposed to this significant number of them that exists really at the Vernon and Park intersection. You know, there are ten fifteen minute spaces in that, plus the curbside spaces that. Are in use by hometown. That does seem to have exacerbated some of the the parking concerns in that immediate area. So we would anticipate relocating some of those fifteen minute spaces or removing some of those fifteen minute spaces altogether. When we talked and Sharon touched on this, when we talked about this with with all of you back in August. We had contemplated, you know, this concept of a of a fifteen minute slash. Curbside space and I think that may work in some locations. I don't know that it would work in all locations based on. Some of the feedback we received, in particular. All of our curbside spaces are temporary in the way that they are signed. They are not. Utilized one hundred percent of the time for curbside spaces and the concern was that if we. Merged the fifteen minute with the curbside is that they would always be in place and that may be confusing. When certain businesses are no longer operating later in the afternoon or evening. Or at other non-peak times. So I just wanted to throw that information out for all of you to to be aware of in terms of of the dialogue that we've had. And then I'll get out of the way.
Let me let me just say, you know. I went to pick up, I confess, I went to pick up food in Highland Park, you know, like. Guilty as charged, but and they have, they have fifteen minute spots there, these they're. And they, there's actually someone running around. When you get out of your car, they'd say, you better be picking something up here. I don't want you staying here for very long. And that was, I thought, appropriate, but it was not called a carrot spot. It was called a fifteen minute spot. But it was designed for the restaurants along that part of the street. Maybe it's possible to have fifteen minute spots. That match the use so that it's fifteen minutes during the times when the restaurants are carrying out. But otherwise it's not. And that would have the same effect because it, there was nothing that said. When I went in the fifteen minute spot that it was for this restaurant or that restaurant, or even that it was for a carryout. It just said fifteen minutes. And it served the purpose.
I think the other aspect of it is the way the curbside spaces have been used here. Is that they're not used uniformly. So hometown, for instance, uses it. In the middle, you know, the the morning through the late afternoon. Guildhall only uses them from five to nine. And so you have, there's a different. There's a different traffic pattern and parking need during different times of the day in our downtown. And I think that's another component of this is that it it does come complicated somewhat when you talk about. When they're in use, how they're in use, how many of them are in use.
So there, I think there are a bunch of spots in the in the. Village Court Lot for foodstuffs, which.
There are two, yep.
You know, maybe they don't, you know, maybe that should be rejiggered some.
I would also add, when those curbside spaces were made available to our restaurants in the summer of twenty twenty. We did not make a decision to to provide, you know, less or more. For different uses. They were all given the opportunity to use up to three. Some have used more as as hometown asked for a fourth one. Some have used fewer than that. Valor often uses fewer than three and food stuff. So. There was no real science behind it. At the time it was, let's provide this, everyone's asking for it. So again, it's, it warrants some consideration about the the total number. I agree.
Okay. There, we're going to do the best we can with the information we have. Like I said, I don't. I don't feel like I know the answer, maybe, and maybe if others do, please speak up.
Well, I certainly don't have the answer, but I'd just like to second the point that the. If we're going to look at this, we ought to look at any. You know, obviously handicapped spaces are a different story and the only thing we should look at there is to make sure we have enough of them in the appropriate places. But. What we're really talking about is looking at all of these fifteen minute spots that we have now. Seeing, do these still make sense where they're at, the number that they're at? Any other specific designated spots that are public? Or a particular user, because we shouldn't treat different users differently. Especially if we're going to tell people, we're going to start to charge you for something, we're not charging somebody else. And and then try to do something sensible, given the real parking needs. But I, again, I I don't think we should short ourselves in terms of the fees that we're charging. And I think our tax system has, the sales tax system has nothing to do with this issue whatsoever.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank staff. I wanted to thank staff. This is what we planner types call managing the curb. And it's, it's, it's tricky and I think there's a bit of trial and error involved in this. And we'll, we'll just have to see what we can do to allocate the scarce resource. And to try to be as equitable as possible for all the, all the uses in the downtown.
I think just one factor again that I'd like to just throw out there for the board's consideration, there, there is a concern that staff has discussed. And Sharon, I I think pointed to it as well. Some of the curbside spaces are alleviating traffic headaches. And some of that is generated by the fact that we have a very popular business in our, in the very center of our downtown and that's Hometown Coffee. The curb, before the curbside spaces were in place, we were dealing with. um, we were dealing with um, double parking, uh, parking along curb lines, um, people parking in the uh, in the intersection. Um, there were a number of enforcement issues. Public safety can't keep up with generally, uh, short of of positioning a, an officer in that intersection one hundred percent of the time. So I I do just want to point to the fact that the curbside spaces do actually create um, some, some benefit from the standpoint of traffic management. And um, in that particular location, which is probably the busiest intersection in Glencoe, um, uh, at any given point on a, on a weekday or weekend, there is some benefit to being able to um, designate spaces that are gonna turn over pretty quickly. I I don't want to speak for Hometown. I think they've given us some, some uh, information over time that some of those spaces can turn over twenty times an hour. Um, so there's, there's a lot of traffic coming in and out of that particular intersection. So I do think we want to be mindful of that. And and to trust the underdog's point, this might be a trial and error type of a, of a scenario for a a while as we uh, work through a couple of different alternatives.
I, Phil, I have to say, uh, thank you. I mean, I was thinking the busiest intersection in town in a, you know, town that doesn't have a lot of intersections. And this is, we're not talking about uh, New York City here. Um, yeah, look, we need to find a balance between helping our businesses and helping ourselves. Hometown, it is, you know, okay, it's the busiest intersection, you know, if we don't count Green Bay Road. Um, but i- it's also on the edge of our enormous uptown business district so that some of that whereas some of the other businesses we've been talking about are more in the middle. So having spaces allocated is sort of less of a problem. Um, there aren't as, there, there aren't as many choi- people don't want to walk more than a block. And so there aren't as many choices we're referring with. But I, you know, I appreciate, and it's clearly true that we're helping ourselves with some designated spots for hometown during that time period. Um, uh, you know, and we should account for that. That doesn't, the, the amounts we're talking about charging are not high. You know, they, I think, and and for parking spots, I don't think anyone's proposing high. I think if we start seeding our sidewalks so that restaurants now have more square feet, I'm gonna wanna charge, you know, I'm not in favor of it, but if we did it, I'm gonna wanna charge more. But um, uh, you know, I still think we should be accommodating folks so they can run their businesses in the way that works with the village. Um, and I would charge for each spot. I would increase the charge. I I do not want it to be enough to affect Hometown's business. I want it to be enough for them to think about asking for just what they need. Which I think was Sharon's idea.
Um, I just want to go back to the point that Phil made because I was thinking also that those pickup carryout spots would turn over much more. And and for that reason, I don't think we should be merging those spots with fifteen minute spots. I think they, they serve very different purposes. And so I like the fact that they can be separate and that they can be temporary to the times of the day when those businesses uh, need them. And then without um, restrictions at, at other times. So I just kind of wanted to go back to uh, to that point of having them as separate classifications, if other people agree.
Thank you. Okay, anybody, I mean, okay, uh, they've managed, apparently they're managing to merge them in Highland Park.
You know, you know. It may, it may relate to you though. And and I don't, I don't mean to to challenge you on that, uh, President Rowan. I I I think
Feel free.
I I've also used those spaces in Highland Park. I I'm sorry to admit, I have carried out food there too. As long as we're confessing, um, and uh, it's, you know, they have a Panera Bread there. And um, that's, that's the one I've used it for. And you're right, those are, they have about, they have about three fifteen minute spaces in a row there. Um, those have been there a long time. And uh, I think it works well for that type of, of a carryout use. I think before Hometown was in its location, I think those fifteen minute spaces would have been just fine. Uh, I just think the particular use, and this comes from our own observations, public safety's ob- observations and staff's observations. There is a lot of traffic there. I I don't mean to to sound like I'm being overly dramatic. It feels a little bit like, like Times Square, um, it, Glencoe scaled um, at certain times of the day. And um, it I think just given the fact that it's a, it's a different type of use, and they've essentially through the pandemic, kind of created, for better or for worse, a a set of expectations for uh, the customer base um, that's being served out of it. So I think your point is a really good one, that, you know, as we look at fee structures, we should appropriately look at how that um, how we, how we account for that um, for all of them. Um, but I think their uses are somewhat different depending um, on, again, Hometown versus Guildhall, to use those two kind of as a, as a bookended set of examples.
So the question, uh, this is a, you know, government one-on-one, what's the best way to address these two? And there are gonna be more than two differing uses. And, you know, maybe we could micromanage it. Or maybe we have a different fee structure so that if you're taking a carryout spot de- designated for your place, you pay more than if you, if you want a fifteen minute spot in front of your place. Because if it's a fifteen minute spot, you could go to Walgreens or um, run into wherever, right around Hometown. But if it's just carryout for them, you can't. And maybe you pay, pay a little more for that. And I don't want to make them pay enough. Uh, you know, maybe that's, that's, that's the free market way to have the decision made as opposed to us figuring out how to micromanage. Um, and I actually sort I, I would hate to try to explain to our various businesses how we decided this or that. It's a lot easier to say, you want more, you pay more. That's, that's easy.
So, um, Howard, are you suggesting that businesses would have to pay for a fifteen minute spot? Because that can be used by so many. I see only a fee structure with the carryout, those specific carryout.
So the answer is, I, I, we have to, I don't know, we have to think about it. We have to think about what works for the town. Um, but so, you know, parking since the year zero in Glencoe, probably when it was Taylor's Port, was a horrible problem. And we, I want to figure out how to manage that. Um, and as we're as we're accommodating particular businesses, we have to think about that. So I don't know. I mean, I, right now, we've got a lot of fifteen minute spots around, and some of them make sense and some of them don't. And staff can figure out which ones make sense, or we could start having the businesses figure out which ones make sense and, you know, and pay for it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't be in favor of the, of charging for fifteen minute spots. I'd like to see it being a lot more equitable with staff figuring out what locations would work best in. Um, and I just think that that should not be something to charge for.
Okay.
I'm, I'm with, I'm with Gail on that point. Um, I also note that I think we have even a five minute spot on Vernon. That, uh, again, I'm not saying it's wrong. Uh, I'm saying, if we're taking a look at things, let's take a look at that too. And does that make any sense? Yeah, trusting limits on things. I'm sorry, I was gonna just say.
No, you're fine.
And and if you want to say, hey, this is fifteen minute only parking from this time to that time, when we think there's much more need, either because people are picking up at Hometown or not, you know, change some of those spaces fifteen minutes only um, uh, for certain hours. And then the rest of the time, it's normal parking rules. Um, I would also be in favor of that. I think people ought to be able to read signs. We have this new sophisticated uh, you know, system for taking license plates, figuring out if you're there too long and all that nonsense. So, you know, we ought to be able to program whatever we need to that. Uh, but at the end of the day, I I'm in agreement that we want to make it convenient for people to come and buy things and and enjoy themselves in downtown Glencoe, whether it's at a restaurant or running into the, to the bank or one of the stores or whatever. But once you get to the designated for one party only, like a pickup for so-and-so's restaurant, then I think at that point, kind of cross the line where we can say let's pay something reasonable uh, to Howard's point. Not so that it hurts or that it's inappropriate, but simply so that you're only asking for what you and the theory that they'll also only be using it during their peak time.
Uh, okay, um, I, I sure, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I think we've given guidance on the parking spaces so that the staff can work on this. And I wonder if we should swing back now to the place where we were, you know, four to three in favor of permanent structures. Uh, if, if we're, if we're looking at that, that's complicated. Um, you know, how are we licensing it? What are we gonna charge? Um, what are they gonna look like? And I guess I would invite um, uh, the folks who were in favor of the permanent structures to start filling the, in the blanks there so that staff can work on that.
President Rowan, um, a question for you. Would you like um, a public comment that we have?
Yes, that's the right comment.
To be read that.
We only have one.
We have, we have, we received two, I believe, but that may help. That may help with the board's discussions.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, President Rowan, with your permission, I will, I will read those. Um, our first public comment this evening is um, from a business or two downtown. It's from um, the staff of Advanced Dermatology and Skinfo, Amy Forman Taub, Dr. Taub and Jeff Taub and their staff. And their public comment is as follows. Advanced Dermatology at seven sixteen Vernon Avenue can bring in up to eighty plus unique patients a day to downtown Glencoe, not to mention our sixty-plus staff members throughout the week. Our demographic includes individuals with expendable income who could or would enjoy spending in what they have described as, quote, "an adorable downtown with unique shops." However, many make the decision to schedule their follow-up appointments at our Lincolnshire location due to the lack of parking near our storefront. We've had many patients complain daily about our parking situation. It was even an issue before the pandemic. But with all the spaces, as well as the central parking lot being used for restaurant access, it has gotten far worse. While we understand the issues surrounding the pandemic for these restaurants and support our neighbor businesses, we feel that we are now bearing the brunt of the sacrifice. Also, the spaces Hometown uses are blocked the entire day, not just during peak breakfast and lunch periods. We want to be good neighbors, but we have client complaints every day. Many of our clients are seniors. We are currently discussing the expansion of our business, and parking is one of the main areas of contention. We would prefer to stay in this location in Glencoe. If designated parking spots and street dining are to remain for other businesses within the downtown area, we feel it is also necessary for multiple spots to be assigned to our business, as well as at the front, as well at the front of Advanced Dermatology. Additionally, we don't mind the tables and the sidewalk, as long as they're off to the side. But we do object to the milling about at the corner of Park and Vernon. There needs to be a clear demarcation for pedestrians to walk through during the warmer months when walking from Park Avenue. Sidewalk should be kept clear and should be for pedestrian use only. Thank you for our consideration of our viewpoint. Um, and that was their comment. And then the second comment we received is from resident Jay Schmeele, and Jay's comment is as follows. Starts with a question. Weren't igloos first proposed as temporary structures to help struggling restaurants? Some igloos have been in place for a year and a half. In addition, the restaurant with the most igloos requires a sixty-dollar deposit to reserve any of their tables and limits dining time to ninety minutes. Does that sound like a struggling restaurant? The other restaurant with igloos is charging more than six dollars per square foot per day just to occupy space they were given free of charge by the village. Why should Glencoe taxpayers subsidize restaurant patrons who require private dining? If some Glencoe restaurateurs have patrons who insist that their table be in a private space, then why don't those proprietors build such spaces inside their existing facilities instead of asking the village to provide public property for igloos? In considering the monetary value of spaces for outdoor igloos, the discussion has ignored the impact on property taxes. All Glencoe businesses or their landlords pay property taxes on space occupied by their establishments. However, Cook County isn't collecting any property taxes on land occupied by the outdoor dining igloos. Consequently, the restaurants with outdoor igloos are not paying their fair share of property taxes to the village, nor to the schools, Park District and Library. This experience should be a lesson for the village and the difficulty of eliminating, excuse me, of terminating an entitlement program. As with other give, government giveaways, the voices of beneficiaries will drown out the voices of those paying for the program by the loss of public property. Restaurant carryout customers should use the same fifteen minute spaces that other business patrons use instead of dedicated spaces. Is a pickup of a life-sustaining medication from Parkway Drugs as important as pickup of a burger or a hot dog? Sharon Tanner's memorandum presents no data, no data documenting the amount of time that these dedicated spaces are actually used. Moreover, the Tanner menor- memorandum did not provide any rationale for recommending up to four dedicated spaces per restaurant. Did the staff even ask Hometown why they need dedicated parking in igloos in Glencoe, but not at their Winnetka location? Finally, since the village has gone down the slippery slope of dedicated parking spaces, why not restrict parking near the library and near the beach to vehicles with Glencoe vehicle stickers? Other nearby municipalities have parking spaces reserved for exclusive use by their residents. Respectfully submitted, Jay Schmeele. President Rowan, those were the two comments we received tonight.
Thank you. They're, uh, thanks. They're, they're germane. Um, and they're thoughtful points too. Should we go back to talking about how to flush out? Um, by the way, the Tanner memorandum? That sounds to me like a Robert Ludlum book, but we'll put that aside. For those who were in favor of structures, uh, the sort of permanent structures, whether they're igloos or something else, um, how would you answer Sharon's questions about how we regulate that?
Well, I would say, first of all, we're not making any decisions, I would say, that are long-term. So when we're looking at this, you know, is the time period a year? Because I don't think we would want to be looking at something with a longer time period. So I think that's the first thing to talk about. You know, what, what is this licensing period going to be? Um, so that we can revisit it again. Because, you know, a year from now or or whenever, we don't know what circumstances will be like. But I definitely um, believe that the appearance guidelines need to be a critical part of it because as we have seen, you know, some some restaurants have have done it well. I mean, our, the appearance of our downtown, you know, is, is different. And um, some of the improvements that we saw were better than others. So I definitely think, think appearance guidelines have got to be a critical part.
Gail, what, and just uh, uh, thank you, uh, thoughtful. And I, I, I take your point about the, the time limit on this. And and I wonder actually what the businesses think as they look at these structures and, you know, how long they'll want to be there. What about price?
Oh, price for the uh, the spaces? Obviously, if you, if you are going to be putting a structure on a parking space, that has to be a lot more costly than if you are just using a parking space for prime time or, you know, or even just five days a week. So I, I definitely think that, that that is much more of an investment um, on the part of that restaurant than, than a typical parking. of that restaurant than than a typical parking space. So in terms of a dollar amount right off the bat, I don't know, but it, you know, it has to be enough. We don't want to price it so that it's like a slam dunk. And of course, I'm going to take the maximum number of spaces I can get. You know, we don't want that attitude. And so, you know, I think we all agree that you want somebody to think twice about it. But they're definitely getting something, something valuable when they're able to get this license on these parking spaces because it is a a great enhancement to their to their operation.
So so I mean, look, the gamma could run the the Tanner memorandum and the born identity, the Tanner memorandum talked about kind of what looked to me like pretty modest prices.
Did she talk? I don't think she talked about space pricing for permanent structures. Did you? It was for, or maybe it was, but I know that it was for the the carryout spaces.
Was it all that was the thousand to fifteen hundred?
Oh, so it was a thousand to fifteen.
That's what I thought. So the game to me, and I and I don't know that this is right, and I don't want to be cost prohibitive. But if somebody's building a permanent space where they're going to have patrons, you could look at the square feet and say, what are you paying per square foot inside? And if it if you're paying X inside, how much less should you be paying us? And so and so that's that's one one point. And then I, you know, you could keep going down and down and down. But and I think this is sort of a Jay Schmeele point. And, you know, I didn't agree with everything he said in his note, but, you know, what are you paying per square foot for your restaurant?
I think, you know, when you you, when you are leasing space in the restaurant, it's built out. Okay. So and when you're talking about leasing a parking space to put a structure on, you've got a lot more cost there involved, too. So I have a little bit of difficulty kind of looking at, you know, a thirty five dollar a foot triple net.
So it's a great, so it's no, so it's the, what's the, what's the price for the ground lease?
Yeah, because that's
that's what's the price for the ground lease? I I'm saying is that's not necessarily in the village of Glencoe a lone number. And it's not necessarily the numbers that we're talking about now. And if you have my view, you get to ignore all of that because you don't have to worry about it. But if we're if we're talking about permanent spaces, we have to think about it.
Yeah, really only talking Guildhall and and Valor, right? They're the only two that want that want them.
Does Valor want them? I don't know.
Actually, it's probably Guild, probably Guildhall and Hometown.
Because I I don't know that we know that others wouldn't want them. I think we've had some conversations and Sharon, you may want to jump in with some of the the discussions you had one on one with our restaurants.
Sure. Thank you. Hometown is currently using sidewalk space because the sidewalk is quite wide in front of their storefront. They've not used parking spaces as part of their licensing agreement. Guildhall uses primarily parking space area as well as a little bit of sidewalk area for its greenhouses right now. And during the warmer months, Valor was using parking spaces for placement of its tent. Guildhall had expressed an interest in continuing to use parking spaces for structures, which may be different types of structures in the future or seasonally different. And Valor may be interested in continuing to use some sort of a dining area or structure in the summer months, or excuse me, the warmer months. And Hometown has has had some continued interest in using the sidewalk space.
Which I think we probably sidewalk shouldn't be free either.
Could I, to to that point of who would be using them? It it may be that you only have one party that wants to use parking spaces when you come up with whatever the program is and and charge for it. However, if you on the theory that you have to make it available to everybody. And if all of a sudden, all your restaurants said, sure, and we're not talking about otherwise, we're out of business because of COVID. Right? We're talking about in what we hope we're getting to the after times. Or at least the we're living with it on a normal basis. That can you imagine if Meg said, sure, I'll take some spots and, you know, Red Hen wants a spot, you know, and everybody wants spots. And suddenly, can you imagine the people are going to come with the pitchforks about the parking? Because we've just taken up two streets. I I think we have to be careful about this, and that's one of the reasons why I think I I was in favor of of supporting their downtown businesses to the fullest in the in the pandemic. And still am and think that was the right decision. And on the other hand, I don't think we should be. I think the conversation we just had about temporary, you know, carryout only spaces and things like that are perfectly appropriate when looking at parking. But I don't think scraping parking spaces permanently off the lot and and allowing anyone who wants to do that to us to take them. I just don't think that's a good idea. So Howard, this is, you know, and and that may well mean that the only party that really can have a permanent structure, again, if we allow it, would be Hometown, and that's more because of just location, location, location. We happen to have very large wide sidewalks there where they're not really blocking.
And, you know, you're preaching to the choir with me, but we're apparently a minority. Joe, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, to trustee Ruben's point, if we did have the the case where you had you had all the businesses wanting to take up all the spots, we we could have it certainly have a a problem. I'm not convinced that's the case. And I think if that was the case, then obviously the price would go up. And, you know, we would have to, we could, we could mitigate it that way. We could also say that there's only X amount of spaces. And you you could, you could use cost as one of the ways to mitigate that. So without trying to punt it or anything, you if you go to a lot of cities, like if you go to the, go to Chicago, they've done this all over and go to Wells Street, right? There's permanent structures all over their parking spots. And I was under the impression they're going to keep them permanent. But how have other other villages and municipalities nearby us handle this? Do we know?
I think so. I'll let Phil or Sharon talk about this. I think the short answer is we don't know. And my only contribution to the enterprise, I'm in Aspen right now. So I sent around yesterday an article from the Aspen Times or the Aspen Daily News. And Aspen said, no, we're we're taking them out. Now Aspen is, you know, we might wish we were Aspen. We're not really comparable. Among among other things, every other store in Aspen is a pot store. So they have basically have pot stores and restaurants and Tommy Hilfiger. But so it's different. Joe, there is nothing, I'm I'm faking it. I'm doing my best. I'm guessing. And I'm persuaded as scary as that 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 we shouldn't be doing this. Do Phil, do we or Sharon, do we know what other towns are doing? I, the only one I know about is Aspen, Colorado, which said, no. So they said, take them down unless it's on private property. If it's on private property, do whatever you want.
Look, every every community deals with this a little bit differently because everybody has different space accommodations. Highwood has done this and and they accommodate seating in parallel parking spaces directly outside of some of their restaurants. Highland Park has done it in certain locations and not in others. When we talked with our our friends over in Highland Park, they said, you know, we're we're contemplating this, but we're not sure how we want to move forward post pandemic. Village Mundeline just passed an ordinance that accommodates seating in the public right of way in the street. It's a little bit different than what we're talking about. That is focused primarily on tables and chairs, not so much on semi permanent structures. And I I I would just point that it isn't. We're not necessarily talking about permanent structures, aside from the fact that they may be physically there for for a while. They are still kind of seen as semi permanent structures. So it's a little bit different than what we're talking about. A number of other neighboring municipalities, Winnetka is a good example, has employed a lot of outdoor dining in their streets. But they're utilizing it differently. They're the the traffic flow is different. The parking accommodations are different. And so it is, there is no apples to apples application to this. Certainly, I think we do have to be mindful of the fact that Glencoe has specific issues that we will always have. And one of those is parking, that there there is, if not a perception, a reality that, I should be, excuse me, if not a reality, then a perception that there's not enough parking. And I do think trustee Rubin brings up a good point, and we've talked about it at the staff level as well. What happens if everybody wants to do it? And I do think we we have to be conscious of that. The other situation that is kind of Glencoe specific is our parking spaces are angle spaces, which makes creation of these a little bit more complicated. When you have a trustee underdunk will understand this, the parklet concept, which is, you know, a perhaps a single parallel space in front of a storefront, that's a nice neat rectangle. We have these odd parallelograms that get created, which change kind of the dynamic, both of how they're used and how much space they take up. And that has impacted us with with Guildhall. So I would just say to your to your question, trustee Hallwax, there isn't really something else we can point to and say, it's working there. Let's apply that same model here. I think we are going to have to be, if we, if the board is inclined to contemplate this and and you you're not making any decisions tonight, you're just giving us some direction. We'll come back with some options for you to consider. And it doesn't mean you have to make the decision next month either. But I think if if there is interest, give us the opportunity to put some information back together and and come back to the board with it. What what about where we they they apply for a license? So then you could assess demand. So but let's say you've got a, you've got a Memorial Day to Labor Day license, right, which would accommodate the likes of one person that we know that wants it. And then you've got a year round license, which we know is another one of our large clients that wants it. Those would be two different types of of permits. But then if if we were to put out there, you have to have your application by X. We're not saying we're going to do it. But you have to have it in by March one. We're then going to know how many people want to do it and what kind. So at that point, can then we then talk next month about what to do? I mean, could we turn it around in two weeks and have them apply? We could, we could contemplate that. I think the other component part to it is appearance standards. So obviously, I think everybody uniformly, whether whether you like the idea of of these temporary structures in the right in the street itself. Everybody seemed to acquiesce around the concept of appearance standards. Applying appearance standards are going to price some people out of this because we've heard that from our from our restaurants. And so I think that's another component that will quell some demand if if the expectation is that there are certain materials or certain colors or certain structures that are going to be off limits, they're not, they're not going to be accommodated and others that would. There's going to be an associated cost with that. I I would say, based off of what we've heard from anecdotal feedback from from residents and others about what people liked seeing in the downtown versus what they didn't like seeing. There's there's a significant cost that goes along with that. And so to your point, not only might it be the licensing and the timelines that may wash some of it out, but also if we apply these appearance standards, some are going to say, I can't do it. I won't do it.
I have one other question. So the agreement that we have now with, I guess it is with Guildhall and and Hometown in terms of the use of these, the outdoor space, whether it's the parking spaces, the sidewalk. So that terminates in April and
March thirty first.
March thirty first. So, I mean, we owe them the the responsibility to make a decision. I mean, how do these businesses get to plan? If we're talking about something in six weeks from now that we haven't made a decision whether we're going to continue or not. I mean, that makes it very hard to run a business under those circumstances. And have you had contact with them? I mean, have they asked? Or have they just assumed that it's going to be renewed at the same, the same wonderful terms that that the prior year was?
We've spoken with them. They they understand that the existing licensing agreements do have a termination date. And we we did share that we were going to have this conversation this evening to talk about the the concept more broadly into the future.
And then trustees, we do have representatives from some of those businesses here this evening, listening to the conversation.
I feel terrible. They have five minutes left. That's sort of unfair for them to say their piece. I wonder if we we I we clearly need to know what their needs are, what they're thinking. Is it? But I I sort of think telling them they have to tell us in four minutes is not adequate.
I think one thing that we could, the board may want to consider is we certainly could. As I I don't think we'll probably lock in exactly what everyone might want to do on a going forward basis. There could be a extension on the March board agenda that would accommodate an additional month or a timeframe that that the board would feel appropriate. That's certainly something that we can do as we work out the details of however we move forward.
So we're not, look, I think we should be, we should assure our businesses. We're not going to tell them that the the igloos have to be gone by, you know, April Fool's Day. We're not, we're not going to do that. But at the same time, it's possible we're going to start charging. And and we have to figure out what we're doing to me, what we're doing about winter. What is this a four season thing? Or a summer season thing? And right now, majority is interested in finding a way to make it to be four season. That's complicated. But I think we should assure our businesses that we're on the same side as they are, and nobody's going to get surprised or tortured. But we do reserve the right. We've been doing this gratis because of COVID. And we might, and that's probably going to stop. I I show that we have three minutes till our next meeting. I apologize to the businesses who may have been loaded for bear to tell us why trustees, Hallwax, listener and Mulvaney are right and that I am full of it. And you'll have to save that for the next time. And and I promise we will, we will hear you, we will give you time. And all of us, even the ones that are inclined against the four season thing, want to hear what you have to say and we'll keep an open mind.
And can we could, we potentially have them speak, but also get something, even a brief note from them so we can review it ahead of the next meeting? I was going to suggest exactly that, trustee Hallwax. What I think we'll, we will do, the staff will do is to elicit feedback from them prior to the next meeting so that that can be included in the packet of information and then also make sure that they're given some time.
Thank you, everybody for all the thoughtful comments, for our business owners who we really value, and not just because of the place of eating tax, but because you make Glencoe a better place. Thank you for putting up with this. And you will get a chance to say your piece and we will take it very seriously. And you will get a chance to say your piece, and we will take it very seriously. Um, okay, um, I think, uh, is there any other business that anybody wants to discuss at this um, committee of a whole meeting? I don't hear any. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
There's a second. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Manager Crowley, please do a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Might be muted still. Okay, uh, trustee underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Majority, we're adjourned. Should we take a short break?
Surely can.
Let's, uh, so let's speak of what are, what are, what do people need for a break before we start uh, round two, five? Good? Okay, five minutes, um, same link. We'll be back, and thank you, everybody, and I just wanted to, trustee Vri, he's going to have to spell out his point of view. He may have been on a college visit, but uh, he does not escape this. Thanks, everybody. See you at five. Um, so are we recording?
Yes, we're still recording and live streaming.
It's it's five minutes. Uh, may I begin reading the boilerplate?
Yes, please do.
Okay, pursuant to uh, uh, pursuant to adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act one-on-one dash zero six four zero, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Pritzker's executive order twenty twenty-two dash oh five has extended this provision through March fifth, twenty twenty-two. As village president, I've made the determination that it is not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the village board is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Corrali is president, village hall, council chambers, and compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Um, I'd like the first item is call the meeting to order and do a roll call. Uh, village manager Corrali, will you do the roll call for us?
Certainly, trustee Hallwax.
Sure.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Yeah.
Trustee Bree.
We have a quorum. Today's board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is software and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call vote rather than a voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. The second item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes. Um, is there, the minutes have been circulated previously. Is there a motion to approve the following meeting minutes? First, the Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole Meeting on January twentieth at five PM. And second, the Board of Trustees Regular Meeting on January twenty at seven PM. Um, Phil, could you do a roll call, please?
We need a motion and a second.
You need a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yeah.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule the board approved on April sixteenth, twenty twenty, here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with meeting agenda. At this time, I'll ask Jordan Rogowski to read any public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda. Jordan.
President Rowan, we did not receive any public comment.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencomeeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting, and written comments should be limited to four hundred words. The next item on the agenda is reports of committees. And the first committee report is the committee of the whole, and I'll do that report. We just finished that. Uh, we had a lengthy discussion about um, whether and how we should uh, continue um, licensing uh, restaurants and businesses using parking spaces and sidewalk for their businesses. And we also talked about how we, how we perhaps should consider um, with um, fifteen-minute parking spots and with carryout designated spots. And uh, the board is going to, uh, the staff is going to, going to continue to work on those issues and report back. In addition, because the businesses interested did not have a chance to talk, we're going to reach out to them and and give them an opportunity to both write and talk to us going forward. So that's the report of the committee of the whole. The next report is the Finance Committee. Um, uh, trustee Vri is uh, out of town, so I'll ask trustee Hallwax to report on that.
Okay, so the finance meeting met on Tuesday on February fifteen, and we discussed the monthly financial report for the month of January. Um, similar to what trustee Vri has been saying of late, the village finances remain in good shape. At the end of January, the general fund reserves are thirteen percent more than last year, and expenditures are well below budget. The water fund is also within the budgetary targets for the year. Cook County mailed property tax bills on time, and the village has already started collecting tax distributions. So fortunately, many of the economically sensitive revenue that we've been monitoring have continued strong performance against the budget, including income and sales taxes, something I think that um, we can see from the vibrant downtown. Uh, the committee requested that staff highlights uh, the impacts on inflation for the village revenues and expenses. We definitely spent some time talking about, you know, what parts of inflation are going to be sticky, such as wages and commodities, and um, and instructor Larson and village manager Corrali walked us through a few examples of some, some challenges, including staffing and also inputs for projects. The committee discussed the current project on this year, or the progress on capital projects. And tonight's uh, agenda is going to include four public works projects and one IT project. And then lastly, the committee discussed the draft of donations acceptance policy. So this is something that came up um, recently, and we're looking at as part of the twenty twenty-two budget process. So the policy is now in line with the village's ethics and ethics ordinance, and includes a review process that will happen at the finance committee level. Staff will be presenting this policy for formal review and approval at next month's board meeting. And that is the summary of the finance committee.
Thank you very much, uh, trustee Hallwax. Uh, trustee Listener, is there a report on the Plan Commission?
Uh, no, we did not meet um, this month, but we are meeting next week, so I will have a report um, at our next board meeting.
Thank you. Um, Joe, you had a short break. Is there a report on the Golf Advisory Committee?
As one could assume, there's not been a lot of golf played particularly uh, this week, but um, due to cold temperatures in January, there was extensive tree work that was able to be done to the course. Um, if I remember right, Stella mentioned that there were twelve trees, twelve dead trees that were able to be removed um, in the month of January. The seasonal staffing interviews have been taking place, and several inter individuals have been selected to work in the pro shop. And I think uh, as we've mentioned before, similar to what we talked about with staffing at the village level, staffing is a challenge, so we're very excited that they've been able to recruit some, some good new employees. Friends of the Golf, Glencoe Golf Course. We're currently at two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and we have a new um, campaign director, Pam Kinsey Lungus, and Pam is the the president of her own consulting firm, and she's got, had a history in campaign fundraising from prior time at Campbell and Company, who we worked with in this project. Uh, she's worked with Chicago Parks Golf Association and the National, or sorry, the Nature Conservatory of Montana and Indiana. So we're excited to have her on board, and she starts on March first. And that is all we have for tonight.
That's great. Thank you. Um, trustee Mulvaney is the report on the Sustainability Task Force. Pete, you might be muted. Jordan, can you tell if Pete is muted, or did he get cut off? Was he in his car?
Um, he is muted, but I'm trying to do what I can behind the scenes. Um, so give it a second.
You know, while you're doing that, let's, let's skip. Um, so Jordan, keep, keep, keep on that. Um, and trustee Rubin, can you do a report on the Council for Inclusion and Community?
Sure. Uh, first Wednesday of the month, happened to be the second we met. Um, had spent a little bit of time on some introductions for our new members, as this board knows, you all pointed them. And um, but we spent most of our time talking about the February eighth Town Hall. Uh, and back to that in a moment. Um, and then we also talked about a bit about um, just what we're going to be doing hereafter and some housekeeping matters. So I think the next meeting, which would be, should be the first Wednesday of next month, I would encourage people to attend if they can. It should be very interesting, and we're soliciting input um, as to what people in Glencoe would like to see the council doing, like going back to the town hall that was on the eighth. I highly encourage people to um, find the link on the village's website or on YouTube and click on it and watch it. Very, very interesting. A number of panelists. Uh, we're talking about ableism and uh, the fact basically looking at people of different abilities. Um, and as one of the panelists said, um, also thinking about oneself, depending upon your own issues, as being a temporarily abled-bodied person. Because whether we have temporary issues or permanent issues, et cetera. Uh, let's face it, at the end of the day, we're all different. And it's all about what we can do and uh, can contribute. It was a very, very uplifting and positive um, uh, town hall presentation, and I, and I really raised some interesting points of, of view and issues, and I I won't belittle it by trying to summarize it, so please, I really do encourage people to to watch it. It's really worthwhile.
Thank you, uh, trustee Rubin. I was at that program, and it was uh, interesting and excellent. Okay, I think we may have uh, trustee Mulvaney. Uh, if we do, uh, can you give us a report, if any, on the Sustainability Task Force?
Sure, let me try one more time. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, sorry about that. Super frustrating, I'm sure, for all. Mostly me. So yeah, the the task force is um, working hard to make Glencoe the most sustainable and desirable community in the galaxy, and we continue to do that. Uh, recently, we've been working on a survey, which will be, um, I don't know exactly the timing, but we will be sending a survey of questions uh, to get gauge of uh, Glencoe residents' awareness of our sustainability efforts and to understand better where they would like us to focus our efforts. Uh, so please be on the lookout for that. If and when you receive that, please take the time to answer honestly and candidly. Other than that, um, we are um, uh, reviewing our, all of our seven primary initiatives, making progress on each front. But really what I wanted to highlight was simply making people aware of this survey. And by the way, the survey will have questions about parking and the use of the public right-of-way downtown, so that information may not come in time, but it will be interesting to see what the responses tell us. Other than that, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate uh, the chance to give the update.
Thank you for that report, and the last report is the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, and trustee Underdunk, uh, tell us about that.
Okay, thank you. On uh, February eighth, the Historic Preservation Commission discussed the January twentieth Committee of the Whole Meeting and the next steps in the commission's research project. That work is underway now with an emphasis on low-cost and no-cost voluntary programs. Uh, the commission, in addition, did a review demolition permit applications for one forty-six Beach Road, which is an honorary landmark, seven thirty Elder Court, three sixty-eight Green Bay Road, and seven sixty-six Grove Street and two twenty-eight Mary Street. So we see the um, interest in demolishing our historic resources. So we see the interest in demolishing our historic resources seems to be increasing. The commission especially discussed the proposed demolition of the honorary landmark at one forty-six Beach Street known as the New Hall property. The New Halls were early settlers of Glencoe. We do intend to initiate contract with the property owner to discuss alternatives to demolition, especially what's come to be known as gut rehab as an alternative for this landmark property. And no other action was taken on the properties to be demolished. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes those reports, so let's talk. Item five on the agenda is reports of officers. And first, the village manager's report, village manager Corrali, please.
Thank you, President Rowan. Good evening, everyone. Just have a few items tonight. First of all, we've, I think all are aware that we've had a rather snowy few weeks here in Glencoe, and even now, the snow is still flying out there as we're meeting this evening. Special thanks to our public works team led by Dave Mao and Don Kirk and our frontline supervisors, Mark Dooley, Frank Coletti, Bob Waring, and John Soldier, and all of our line guys who have been putting in lots of extra hours to make sure that our streets and our sidewalks are safely passable with all of these snowfalls that we've, that we've experienced. Unfortunately, the snow hasn't figured out that falling during regular work hours is really the ideal. Actually, just for the first half of the day, and then that would give us the second half of the day to, to clear everything. So we, we do appreciate the extra time that, that these folks have had to put in overnights, over weekends. And they're, they're doing a great job making sure everything stays clear. Along with that, we have had some significant water main breaks this, this winter as well. Special thanks to those, those crews who were working overnights and deep in dark, cold conditions to make sure that our water system is functioning appropriately and to make sure that our residents have water turned on as quickly as possible. Special thanks to our residents for their patience and understanding while we get those, those repairs completed. But it is winter, and our hope is that winter decides to, to wrap up soon despite what the groundhog said to us a few weeks ago. I think everyone's familiar with the fact that the village has been partnering with a, a firm called Simple Recycling to provide weekly curbside pickup of textiles for recycling and reuse. This has been in place for about the last year and has been a really nice way for our community to, to further divert items from landfills. The program's really been very successful. We heard just this week, just after we pushed out information on this program last week in our e-news blast, that Simple Recycling is making some changes to the program. Namely, it's no longer gonna be where you just place your items out on your, your regular garbage day, but now it's gonna be by appointment. We have information that's, that's on the village's website that will direct residents on how to set up those appointments. You can use the orange bags that we have distributed and have available here at Village Hall, or you can use any bag that, that you'd like, and they will pick those up still free of charge. The one change, as I mentioned, is that now it is gonna be by appointment only. So all of that information's gonna be on our, is on our website. If there are questions, you can certainly reach out to our Public Works Management Analyst, Jeff Maudsley, who is the liaison on that program. Relative to comm ed tree trimming, we have had a couple of questions about comm ed tree services that are in town. I will say, this is part of comm ed's normal routine line maintenance program that is done in concert with our, our Public Works Department in terms of, of consultation. If you live in the northeastern portions of Glencoe or on the west end of some of our presidential streets, you may have seen tree services in, in town. Those folks are supposed to be here. We do have information on exactly where they're working, again, on the village's website. But want to make sure that, that folks do know that that is acceptable, and that is under the guidance of both comm ed and the village. This coming Monday is President's Day. While we are, all of our employees will report to work on Monday, the village hall and village offices are closed to the public that day. It is not a garbage collection holiday, so garbage will be collected as normal. And last but not least, I want to embarrass somebody a little bit because they've made the decision to advance themselves and to continue to grow and, and, and become even more successful. My last item is to mention, Jordan, who I'm glad just brought herself back onto, onto camera. I wanted to announce some bittersweet news. I think all of the board and, and our staff knows, but for the benefit of the public, that Jordan's last day with the village of Glencoe is next Thursday as she takes the next steps in what will undoubtedly be a very, very successful career. Much more than just the voice of public comment during our last two years of remote village board meetings. Since starting with the village in two thousand seventeen, Jordan has been a hardworking advocate for our residents and businesses, and has been involved in virtually every aspect of the village's operations in her various roles in the village manager's office. She joined our team as a management analyst from the village of Hoffman Estates and immediately cemented her role in the organization with her optimistic attitude, quick ability to learn, and her driven can-do personality. Through the pandemic, so much of the excellent communications that the village developed and distributed during that time was Jordan's work, and she became an invaluable resource to our business community as they navigated the complex sets of regulations and mitigations enacted by the state of Illinois and Cook County. Jordan has worked closely with the Historic Preservation Commission her whole time with us and has been a member of our business services team. She's been a liaison to the Chamber of Commerce and North Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. She has coordinated special events, developed policy and programmatic recommendations, analyzed village operations, undertook the role of deputy village clerk and everything that goes along with that. It's not glamorous. And has liaised with the village board and our partner governments in numerous ways. While with us here in Glencoe, Jordan completed her Master of Public Administration degree from Northern Illinois University and recently married the love of her life, Matt Rogalski, and confuses me because I have to try to remember that she has a new last name in a beautiful ceremony in Iowa. Above all, and I think I speak for everybody in acknowledging this, Jordan just has a true servant leader mentality. She's shown true passion and dedication to her work and is just a fervent promoter of Glencoe and everything that this community stands for. She's been the unofficial ambassador between the village and every dog in town, often taking the time to learn about various facts about those dogs. And in the process, chatting and developing friendships and relationships with our residents. And, and I think that's just a, a symbol of the kind of person that she is. To say I will miss her and the organization will miss her is a tremendous understatement. But I'm really, really, really truly excited for her as she steps into the next roles in her career, which, as I said at the outset, is undoubtedly gonna be very successful. Jordan, we wish you only the best. We thank you for all of the time, effort, resources, blood, sweat, and tears you've put into the, the work you've done for us for the last four and a half years. And I hope I've sufficiently embarrassed you, because that is generally always my goal when I do these kinds of things. But, but truly, thank you, and we wish you only the best.
Thank you. Um, I'll, if that's embarrassing, then I, I would be okay being that type of embarrassed all the time. I won't, I won't waste the, the board's and staff's time, but it's truly been wonderful. And I'm gonna keep my I love Glencoe button with me, and that's all I can make out right now, but thank you so much. It's been wonderful.
We're gonna miss you, Jordan, and there will never be another Jordan Lester Rogalski, or whatever your name is. I'll, I'll remember it one of these days.
My dad doesn't know it either, so.
I will say next month, we'll be announcing some new staff who are joining us in various roles. We've been going through a, a pretty significant recruitment effort across every department in the organization. And I'll introduce some new faces and names to the board in March. And with that, that's the, the extent of my report.
Thank you, Phil. The next item is the village president's report. Let me just say, since we're on the subject of Jordan, Jordan, I'm a newbie in this job. I could not have done it without you. You have been magnificent, you know. Working with you, you've been excellent and delightful, even when I've been neither. So I, I just wanna, I can't imagine leaving Glencoe as like a positive step. But, you know, because we think, to quote Pete Mulvaney, it's the best place in the universe. But I think in your case, you'll make it a positive step. You will be missed. You've been great. So thanks. Okay. My report, first item is, we talked about it last month, but what I'd like to do now is have a motion to approve and a second to approve the appointment of Hillary Scott and Raphael Guzman as co-chairs for the Glencoe Council for Inclusion and Community. They've served on, on the council with distinction, and I think we're lucky to have them as the co-chairs. And I would request a motion to approve in a second.
Don't move.
Or a second.
Okay, Phil, could you do a roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
The motion carries, and they're appointed. Thank you. The next item is the appointment of Jake Holzman to the zoning board of appeals and the zoning commission. We have a vacancy. Dave Friedman served for many years on the zoning board. He was on the zoning board before I got on it. And throughout the entire time I was on the zoning board, I just want to say that we are, we are lucky for, to have had Dave's service all that time. And, you know, I, I, he was a, a great help from the time I got on that board and, you know, until he decided finally it was time to retire from it. So thank you, Dave. We have a number of excellent folks have talked to us about being on the zoning board, and we've settled on Jake Holzman, who is a, he's in the real estate biz. He's a, he grew up in Glencoe, and I think he will be a great benefit to the village, serving on the zoning, on the zoning board and the zoning commission. So I'd like to request a motion to approve his appointment in a second, if I could get that.
Don't move.
Then I'll second.
Thank you, Phil. Could we do a roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yeah.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
The motion carries, and Jake Holzman is appointed. The next item on the president's agenda is consideration of a proclamation declaring February two thousand twenty-two as Black History Month in the village of Glencoe. The plot proclamation has been circulated and published. And I'd request a motion to approve in a second.
Then I'll second.
Thank you. Manager Corrali, could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yeah.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, that takes care of the, the president's report. The next item is item seven, the consent agenda. Since this is a virtual meeting, for clarity purposes, the village manager will read the titles of all the items on the consent agenda, which have been published and are in the public record. Phil?
Thank you, President Rowan. The first item is the January two thousand twenty-two village treasurer's report and golf financial report. The January two thousand twenty-two check register for the village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club. Ratification of the January two thousand twenty-two early check register list. Consideration of a supplemental appropriation ordinance and corresponding budget amendment for calendar year two thousand twenty-two, beginning January one, two thousand twenty-two and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Consideration of an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-one to pay the principal of an interest on general obligation bonds, waterwork system alternate revenue source, series twenty twenty of the village of Glencoe, Cook County, Illinois. Referral of a proposed zoning code amendment regarding front setbacks on corner and through lots to the zoning commission for a public hearing. Consideration of a resolution appointing a director and alternate director representing the village of Glencoe for the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County Board of Directors. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the purchase of one X series advanced manual monitor defibrillator from Zoll Medical Corporation in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Midwest Brick Paving Incorporated of Antioch, Illinois for downtown sidewalk brick paper restoration improvements for costs not to exceed one hundred forty thousand dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract extension with Mike Greco Landscaping Incorporated, Gurnee, Illinois to furnish and plant parkway trees for the two thousand twenty-two season for total cost not to exceed thirty-eight thousand dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Builders Paving LLC of Hillside, Illinois for the two thousand twenty-two maintenance street resurfacing program for a total not to exceed costs of one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and execute an agreement with Hampton Lonzinian Renwick Incorporated of Elgin, Illinois to provide construction engineering services for a total not to exceed costs of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with RJN Group Incorporated of Wheaton, Illinois for professional engineering and field services for the MWRD IICP Long-Term Program for Cap, Calendar Year two thousand twenty-two for a fee not to exceed eighty-one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And finally, consideration of a resolution authorizing waiver of the competitive bidding process and authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Minesight Technologies of Downers Grove, Illinois for the purchase of infrastructure switching equipment for a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Phil. You're entitled to a short break to get your breath back. And I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Quick question first. This is trustee Mulvaney.
Go ahead, please.
Bill, your break's over. Just a quick question to confirm that the, that the contract for the tree replacement is explicitly consistent with the tree ordinance that we have in Glencoe.
I'm looking at the public works director. I believe the answer is yes to that, but Dave, I'm gonna let you answer.
Ye- yes, it is. As, as our ordinance is currently written, absolutely. I mean, there's a, there's a large number of native trees that are part of our planting tree list. This is the same contractor that we, has kind of grown with us the last decade. And so this is the fifth and final year of this agreement, and we will re-evaluate going forward in two thousand twenty-three. But yes, the two thousand twenty-two contract is, is consistent with our current tree preservation ordinance.
Great. Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Something, if I may?
Please, Dudley.
Yes. I'd like to highlight the fact there are five capital items in this consent agenda. We have our own Build Back Better Glencoe program going on here. And these things are not exciting, except for some of us who are a little crazy. But these are the skeletal items that hold together our community, and they're really important. And I have this discussion with my wife occasionally where I wanted to replace the water line, and she wants to paint the entire interior of the house. And, you know, they're both, they're both important things, but without the water, you don't have the house. So I just want to say kudos to the staff and to the people in the finance department that put together this project. And I think it's so important that we cover the basics well. And this is part of doing that well call, common jobs uncommonly well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Well said. And as long as you said it, do you want to?
I assume.
Second.
Phil, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. We might have got.
Yeah.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item eight, regular business. And the what we have on regular business is consideration of an ordinance amending the building code to require escalating permit extension fees for multiple building permit extensions. We've talked about this in the committee of the whole. And I'd ask our development services manager, Taylor Baxter, to tell us about this.
Thank you, President Rowan, members of the board. Is the PowerPoint visible?
Yes.
Okay, so just some some background. An overview, just a reminder where where we've talked about this before. This came before you last December, a committee of the whole. This is an issue that really arose out of some some communication we've had with with some residents about a small number of projects that are taking years to complete. Some a small number of houses under construction and that are getting multiple permit extensions. And this is really causing ongoing nuisance issues for neighbors, noise, your typical construction issues over the over the course of what in a small number of places has been years of construction. So as a reminder, our current system, your permit with your regular permit fee is 15 months in length. You can then request a six-month extension for a 33% extension fee. That's 33% of the original permit fee. There's no limit to the number of extensions. At this point, you can request as many as you as you want. And most new homes are finishing within that 15 months. Very, very few are going beyond it. And then even fewer are receiving multiple permit extensions. We've only had three addresses since 2020 that have gotten multiple permit extensions. You can see them there. But those very few projects are taking a very long time to complete. So this is really an issue that is not impacting most of the village. But in the small number of places that it is coming into play, it is having a fairly significant impact. You can see two of these 395 and 411 Lakeside are actually right next door to each other. So the people who live near there have been dealing with a lot of construction with eight, a total of eight permit extensions. So we looked at policies in nearby communities. You can see here Glencoe is kind of in the middle when it comes to permit length at 15 months. And then your percentage of fees per month on a per month basis that you pay for an extension. Some other communities have more discretionary review with the zoning board of appeals or the village manager. We don't have that. Some places don't have that. But at this point, we're kind of right in the middle with where we are. I don't think that our our policies are extreme in any way. And I think that they do work well for for most properties in the village. I mean, again, this is really trying to target this small number of outliers. So we, after getting direction from the board, talking to some neighbors of these properties, we did get some feedback from the board in December to pursue, looking into some policies that might really encourage these really long-term projects to speed up and get done in a reasonable amount of time. So there were a few things that were considered, but not really recommended, you know, not allowing extensions. We feel that that would end up with actually probably creating more delays with half-finished projects requiring a new full permit with new review that would also likely slow the process down if something is in progress or nearing completion and they have to go back through their full permitting process, it would slow it down. Likewise, with ZBA or village manager review, we feel that that would add some unnecessary steps in this process when what we're really trying to do here is do whatever we can to just encourage them to to speed up and finish up. There were some questions about whether we could, you know, put restrictions on other sites with the same builder if a builder's, you know, taking too long on one site. But we feel that that would probably not be something that we would recommend for most likely legal reasons. And we really just want to target those specific sites where this is a problem. So our recommended solution to this would be escalating permit extension fees. This is a proposed escalation, this escalating fee schedule. This is what's in the ordinance and that's part of your packet. What we're proposing here is first six-month extension to keep it at the existing 33%. And what would change would be subsequent extensions after that. So this really wouldn't come into play until 27 months after a permit is issued. That's when that second extension would be issued. And that's the first time you're really going to see this escalation. So this is not going to be something that hits a lot of a lot of projects, but we do hope that if this is something that the board feels is appropriate and adopts this, that it would encourage these really long-term projects to speed up. And after the after that second extension, again, you go from what would originally be 33% to an additional 66%, and then after that, 100% for every new extension. So this is this is our recommendation for what we would hope would would really encourage those really long-term projects to to speed up. The next step would be to adopt the ordinance to revise the building code. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this. With that, I'll turn it back over to President Rowan and the board.
Taylor, thank you for a clear, pithy presentation. The proposed changes have been circulated. We need to do something. It's not going to affect many people, but anybody who's got a unending project near them is probably looking for relief. And my only question is, I wonder whether we should increase the first extension price, because I think we want to we want to encourage folks to get this over with in behalf of the neighbors. And by the way, it may be in behalf of the homeowners. And in my experience is dealing with developers, building contractors, they're juggling all their projects. And if it's free to work on some other project, they'll do it. So I wonder if we should, you know, maybe not third, maybe raise the price so it's 50% for the first extension and bump it up accordingly. And if that if people, you know, Taylor, if you think that's a bad idea, you know, say so. But I we need to do this in the interest of our, you know, our homeowners.
Was that a question for me, President Rowan?
Yeah.
It's I think that's something that is open for discussion. I would I'd say that right now our permit extension fee on a per month basis is is right in the middle of our neighboring North Shore communities. You know, Northfield doesn't charge a fee, but they make people go through a ZBA approval. And then Kennelworth and Weneka are right there. We're at 5.5% per month. They're both at five and 5.5. Well, that's a bit higher. They're at 8.3% per month. Right now, we're pretty much right in the middle of that group. So and I think an increase there would take us up towards the higher end. That's something that is up for discussion. If the board wants to take it up towards the higher end, that's certainly something that could be considered.
I don't I don't want to make our initial burden building permits more expensive than our neighbors. But I I think I want to discourage developers and the occasional homeowner from operating away that tortures the neighbors. And I don't know if this will be enough to to do it, but you know, every developer I know is looking to spend as little as possible.
I would say that the first that first six-month extension would hit, it would you bring in, I don't have the number in front of me, but you bring in a lot more projects than that second extension. That once you get to that second extension, that's where it's really narrowed down to a really small number of projects. That's what the first extension, there's there's a fair number of projects that go a month or two. And, you know, they pay the extension and then they get a refund of, you know, a prorated refund for the for when they finish. You would you would bring in a fair number of additional projects that you would not with that other one. But that's it's up for discussion, certainly.
So I'm in I'm in favor of it because I think people will get it done if it costs more.
I'm in favor of that as well, especially if you're talking, which I didn't realize that we prorate a refund if they get it done within that time period. I frankly, I think, maybe we ought to just stop doing that.
The reasoning behind that is that if you if you grant a six-month extension, we don't want to encourage people to take the whole six months. We want to encourage, if we grant a six-month. We want to encourage them to.
Makes sense. The clock is ticking and time is money kind of thing. Okay, I'm fine with that. In that case, I definitely like President's suggestion.
In the litigation biz, there's the Eastern District of Virginia has something called the Rocket Docket. And the Rocket Docket, if you file a case in Eastern District of Virginia, which is Alexandria, the case is going to get tried in six months. And that that works for them. What happens is the cases settle. Everybody just has to accommodate this and other places slow down and grant extensions. But if you're in the Eastern District of Virginia, you have to get it done. And if if we are a little more expensive than our neighbors, then the developers will get it done here first and will be better off. So anyway, that's my thought.
Have we thought about doing something in shorter time increments? I noticed that was in six-month time increments where we stepped up every six months. Have you thought of stepping up in three-month increments?
It sounds like we're doing it in monthly increments.
Well.
Really, we we asked for six months to be upfront, but if they finish early, they get a prorated refund.
But the but wasn't the the price premium was stepping up every six months? So I was just saying, have we thought of stepping up every three months? The reverse side of this, of course, with all the supply chain issues right now. You know, you may have delays that are not being caused by, you know, intentionally by either the homeowner or the contractor. So that's the other thing I think we just have to think about, too, as we institute.
That's clearly been true. We also hope it's not going to be true go as true going forward. So and but yes, basically, we're looking at those six extensions at one place and two at another. That has to stop. And like I said, I just think if we're a little bit the squeaky wheel on this, this, it's going to help people in our town. And if we find out that people are being victimized by supply chain issues, you know, we'll adjust if we have to. But I I just everything I know about developers is they are juggling all their different projects and they get to you when it's convenient for them. And we're just trying to change that a little bit. Anybody else have thoughts on this? Well, Taylor, you know, I think nobody's outraged at the idea of bumping up the first one. So why don't we bump that up a little bit? And the only question now is, do we think we're ready to vote or do we need to? I mean,
President Rowan, did you did you have a dollar figure? And I think if, you know.
I was thinking 50%. I mean, it's not a huge difference, but it's but at the same time, hey, you know, half the full half price, if you know, it's just a little more and then bump up.
Yeah, if the board is inclined to do that, someone could make that motion to amend the ordinances drafted to accommodate the those changes. And the board could vote on it tonight. If you don't want to do that, we can bring it back to you next month.
No, I so I'm inclined to if it's so my only question is, I thought it through enough to say the first one, 50%. And I and I, how does that change? What's the best way to change the second, the third? We really want to put the screws to people on the second and the third. And I don't want to detract from that by increasing the first one.
So 50%, 75% and 100%?
I'll make that motion.
Good.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's have a roll. Anybody else want to say anything about 50, 75, 100? Okay, let's have a roll call.
So do we have a, I'm sorry, I may.
50% is the first extension, 75% is the second extension, 100% is the third and thereafter.
So there was a motion to that effect. Okay.
I made that motion.
Apologies.
Very seconded it.
Okay, so we we have everything we need except me. All right, trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Motion carries. I think we've done something good for our residents. And if we didn't get it right, we'll we'll look at it. Okay, that's that. That's the regular business. The next item is other business. Is there any business any member of the board would like to discuss? I don't hear anyone. Jordan, have we gotten any public comments by email?
No, we have not.
Okay. So before we adjourn, the next item is closed session. And I'd ask for a motion to move into closed session pursuant to section 2C2 collect to discuss collective bargaining, 2C11 pending litigation, 2C1 personnel and 2C21 review of closed session minutes. I think we need a motion and then a second.
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And village manager Crowley, could you read the roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. So we're going to get off this link and go on to a link that our village council sent. And then we'll go back to this when we're done to close the meeting. So with that, thank you. And let's all find Steve Elrod's link and go to that. And let's all find Steve Elrod's link and go to that.
I'm glad that it tells you now about that, I'm actually going to talk first.
It was.
Phil, can you hold on?
I can hear you.
I'm getting something that says unable to start video. You can't start your video because the host has stopped it.
Oh, well, I don't know how to restart it.
Don't worry about it because we're talking. So I'm looking at you. I'm going to say okay to that. And I think so let me say that when we when we adjourn, call me.
Okay, that's fine.
What do we need to do to adjourn?
All you need to do is indicate that you've emerged from closed session and the board has given you the authority to adjourn open session.
I have just emerged from closed session and the board has authorized me to adjourn the open session.
And we are adjourned.
All right, Phil, call me on my cell.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, see you.